I want to be a chief.
You keep it elevated.
Or something, you say something with dates.
Weeks.
So if you have a knee or something?
I have crutches and then that little scooter in the conference room is mine. For long hauls, I use the scooter for short ones.
Do you remember Walmart's driving?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's down by my.
You said wheel down and, so right as a really tall skateboard.
But you know, I told Ellie the first time I rode on it, because it doesn't, hasn't, doesn't have a good turning radius. I said, you know, the last time there's on something like this where you lean into a curve, the bike will leave. Well, it's not doing that.
Can I say what doesn't work?
It doesn't, they can't, because I have to have both of my feet down.
It's kind of dangerous, huh?
There's a cowboy looking at it, as you said.
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's work session. The time is five P M., the date is March fifth, Tuesday, two thousand nineteen. Fall notice is on file for consideration of city council. Item one, which is the code of conduct and code of ethics.
Mayor.
Council, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staffs.
Good evening.
So I hope you have seen the latest edition in your drive. And I'm sorry that it was just sent yesterday, I tried to get it. Yeah, you can't do that on the computer, Mayor. That's funny, I think I'm the only one who saw that. But he went like this. So with that beginning, no, but one thing I wanted to bring to your attention right away, and that is, first of all, the pages are numbered now, thank you, Audra, for making that suggestion. So you would please look at page five.
Tell me where to find it.
Oh, sure, where do we find it?
In the special meeting.
Under the special meeting.
Under the special meeting folder?
Oh, okay, got it. So there's more. Okay, got it, got it, got it.
Is there a new version of it or?
There is a new version of it, yes, in your drive, under, in your driver, special meeting agenda?
The two thousand nineteen special meeting agenda.
Agenda, that's the day, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I think I got that one.
Okay, that is the latest one, I'm sorry. You were holding up papers, and I thought you had.
No, I figured.
Okay, good, good, but yes, the one that you received yesterday is the.
Are you on the special meeting?
The most recent copy. Let me know when everybody has their place. It's really hard to just stand here and not talk. Just kidding.
Your page?
Five.
Page five.
Please.
Okay, got it.
And as you're going there, that is a new section. And I had mentioned, excuse me, subordinate boards or other boards and commissioners kind of throughout that. But I wanted to add a, not a paragraph, but a couple of paragraphs on the subject to make it clear that you have authority over what I have titled subordinate boards and commissions. And I think that's kind of clear from the prior language, but I wanted a section on that subject in particular. One thing I wanted to bring to your attention, I've been kind of sharing this vignette with a number of people, but to kind of highlight the importance of having sort of an ethical overseer for the boards and commissions. And that is recently, there was a board, and they were considering, I believe it was a twenty thousand dollar grant. And one of the people who spoke in favor of the grant, who was asking board for the grant, was a board member's spouse. And it was never discussed, it was never brought up, and no one ever even mentioned it. So while I don't think anyone was trying to be guilty of just, you know, violating like every kind of ethical tenet you can think of by doing that, people need to be reminded or cautioned or told that they have to say, I, as the board member, am not going to be considering this item, because the person speaking is my spouse. You know, all the things that have gone on over the years, sitting in audience, you know, an audience is a, is a council member, but all those things, sometimes they are overlooked, I understand that. But board and commission members need to be reminded of that kind of thing and how that's not appropriate to do. Of course, you know, there are staff members there at every meeting, there, you know, anyway, so I, I give that as an example to you and as a, a need for, again, you to have ethical oversight of boards and commissions and board and commission members. Not that that's the most heinous thing that's ever happened, but I, I give you that as an example. Some of the other changes we talked about previously, I have also made, like the you keeping legal advice confidential, even if it's given in the council meeting, I mean, that such has been taken out. Right, that, that has been removed. So I try to, I, I try to incorporate all the suggested changes that we talked about previously. But, you know, I, I want you to have time to go over this again and look at it and, and review it and let me know what you think. But any, any questions or items of discussion?
And do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do, thank you. Okay. All right, so on page two, it says complaint, and I think it's a complaint against the mayor or member of some sort or board or commission member alleging that it's not. I think later it says that you decide if something is harassment, is that correct?
Correct.
But if it's a city council, you're not going to throw something out.
That's the way it is.
Right.
That's the way it is.
Well, actually, I, if it is.
Because you don't want to be seen as taking sides.
Correct, correct.
Let's say someone's complaining, someone's opposing, complaining against me.
That's correct.
And you throw it out for harassment, he's going to think your bread is buttered and toast for me, isn't he?
That's correct. That provision was written primarily in consideration of complaints by council against council. And I really don't have a provision in there, and I welcome your direction, because I don't have anything to trust. It's a board or commission member making a complaint against council. Right? So I could treat a board or commission member just like I do city council. And say, if they make a complaint against you, I am not to dismiss that. Frankly, I mean, and I don't mean to be kind of, you know, browbeating board or commission members and treating them like, like second-class citizens, but I don't have, I, I don't have a problem with the notion of dismissing a complaint filed by a board or commission member if I think it was undertaken for harassment. Bearing in mind that I have disclosure obligation to everybody, so of course, nothing is, is happening in secret. But I, I don't need to get too far, I feel for the question.
It says here somewhere that you won't rule if it's somebody moving against a city council member.
Counsel the council member.
It's only counsel to counsel?
Right, right. If, if it is counsel to counsel, it will not be dismissed, because that would make me look like I was playing politics. If councilor intake files a complaint against you, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to dismiss that, because that would have me.
But, but at the same time, you know, if there's something frivolous and it comes forward, it just, all it is is, that, that's the, that's the question that I have, and then I'm not sure of the rest of the things, but frivolous charges, you know, can create a lot of animosity and a lot of issues within council, and so that's the thing that I'm looking at.
I understand, and, and it's a good point, Mayor, but I don't want to dismiss a complaint filed by one of you against the others. I mean, I, I think it kind of is giving me a lot of leeway that wasn't in the code before. That is, I can look at a complaint filed by a citizen and say, I don't think there's anything there. And it, it doesn't have to be filed for purposes of harassment. If it really just looks like it is, you know, filed without merit or doesn't allege violation of the ethics code, I can dismiss it. But if it's filed by one of you, it's just kind of putting me directly in between you.
I understand.
Okay.
The frivolous issue is that.
I understand.
You can give us your opinion.
Absolutely, absolutely.
There's a way we can kind of head things off, isn't there? We'd all say it's obviously frivolous.
Yep, there.
But we don't want to go to the next step.
There was, go ahead, councilman, well, okay, there was, but that was kind of an odorous process as well, because at the beginning of each complaint, you had to decide whether or not, there was, I think, probable cause, for lack of a better term, and you first had to rule on whether or not you wanted to dismiss the complaint. It was in the code, it was an affirmative question for you, shall we dismiss the complaint? Rather than hearing it and then deciding whether or not you want to dismiss. So there isn't anything built in early on for you to dismiss a complaint, I admit that.
Except for the fact that it says we shall not enforce your frivolous complaint on page two.
Correct.
So that can be ground for not bringing it forward.
That's right, it could even be an ethics violation in and of itself.
This is kind of a small item, but it says city council, this is on page three, paragraph four, Roman four. What did you say? Yeah, Roman four, initiating a proceeding in ethics.
Yes.
It says, city council shall be notified within seventy-two business hours.
Okay, that isn't what I meant, within seventy-two.
Five hours, so that's one third of business hours.
So I will wait seven point three days, no, I, I get it, yeah, okay.
Against one or more of its members, but only after the council person or persons complained against are first notified. What is the notice period for the board? Because I didn't see that covered here. Somebody files, we're in the Board of Ethics.
Correct.
Okay, and we have to convene as Board of Ethics, and someone files a complaint against one of the planning and zoning commissioners. It just didn't have a notice period.
You're right, you're right. I would, I would try to comply with the same notice.
I would think it should be the same.
Yep, yep, and I can, I can add that.
Okay. Uh, I'll give you a net at the end.
Sure.
It's like some words were like here. Okay, this is something you and I talked about in one of your previous ethics complaints. I was concerned that someone might call us all as fact witnesses. Let's say that one of us did something really bad at the council meeting, aren't we all fact witnesses?
Yeah.
And then, and then what do we do? How do we even have a qualm? Or we're all at the same conference, and somebody does something really terrible. And then we all get called as fact witnesses by the person, you know, by the person who had the complaint against them. Just bring it to a grinding halt.
Right.
So I don't know how you deal with that. I remember being quite concerned that it could be used as a tactic. Yeah, it's not likely to, but it's going to bind future councils.
You're right, you're right.
So I, I'll ask you to think about that.
Okay.
Okay, here's C, conduct, conducting the hearing, and it talks about the pecking order of who presides at the meeting, depending upon whose refused. It is entirely possible that there could be a tie. For instance, mayor, mayor pro tem, and that's the next most senior council member. Well, anyone who is elected in the same election cycle, it's going to be a tie.
Right, that's true.
But it, well, specific to us it will, because what's Joe and you are kind of.
Right, but her point is that came down.
Yeah, exactly.
It could happen.
Right.
Once we get on a regular cycle where people are pulling off calls at times and so forth, it could easily.
Alphabetical order.
That's one of the things that they use in seniority, so.
Yeah, that's a simple.
One class had everybody coming in at the same time, entered the seniority, so they put you there with alphabetical. You know, acting.
I think it's a good looks, frankly.
That's right, she said good looks.
We smell it when I smell it. I, I think alphabetical would be.
I think alphabetical.
Okay.
But, you know, might as well do it right.
No, you're right.
At the time you're doing an ethics complaint, who's presiding over that, that could be very contentious.
I agree.
This is going to be such a fun read for you, just kidding.
Other, can I keep going? Other confidential matters. It kind of alludes to the fact that there are things that are, and remember, we're talking about an ethics complaint here, where you should exercise your common sense and understanding when confidentiality is expected. And I, I just, boy, I'd hate to have somebody get an ethics complaint based on someone's challenging their common sense and what should have been, I mean, it could be a really tight, you know, difficult part. I mean, obviously, anything in executive session or anything where someone has said, this is important that we stay confidential, that's probably going to be in the executive session anyway, because otherwise it's in public. But it could be outside, you know, someone could call me on the phone and say, hey, I heard this, but keep it confidential. I think the burden is on the person giving the information and not, not a burden on the person receiving the information to exercise common sense.
Okay. The burden on the person receiving, I guess.
Well, right now, it says, sometimes you should just, if you receive information that you should exercise common sense and knowing that the person who's parting the information would have wanted it to be confidential. Yes, I, I can see that that's sometimes the case.
Right.
But sometimes it's not the case.
Okay.
You know?
I understand.
So I think the burden should be only on things where the person, executive session. Also, if someone has told you that you must keep it confidential, whether it's a staff member or another council member.
Okay.
And that would probably be, you know, you might have been in a grocery store or something like that.
Otherwise, it's use your discretion and, I mean, like you said, you don't want to be accused of an ethics violation.
Yeah, these are things that can get dicey, as I was saying, so things, vague notions like, vague is probably an odd word, but things that can be debatable, like common sense.
Right.
Okay, I think this needs to be cleared, they sound like a nit, but I can see people parsing words later on on page eight, where it's Roman three, communications. The third line says, communications with three board or commission members. I think it should be between three. In other words, you don't know whether the three is four, are you included in the width? If you say between, that clarifies it.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, because I think someone's saying, oh, no, they told me I could talk to three other people, well, that's a qualm.
No, good point, good point, absolutely, see, okay.
Okay, this is something small, but the molly evens and gifts, when's the last time that number was updated? You can't even get a dinner in Denver.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
Seven five.
Okay, well, why don't, a hundred bucks, okay.
Because I remember actually sweating that when I had to go north to testify in a court case.
Understood.
We're going to check the statement off. Oh, but that's a good point, yeah. Okay. Ta-da, done.
Thanks, thanks.
Presti.
She covered everything I had.
Don't.
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Let's see. I have on page eight, um, on nepotism.
Right.
And I think that when something appears that somebody has tried to get someone to hire a family member or whatever, that should be reported immediately to, whether it's the city manager, or the mayor, or if it's the mayor, that's the problem, or if it's, you know, it's, it's got to be reported somehow or to you. And I, I think that there needs to be some kind of follow-up there.
Okay.
So that, that it's brought out. I'm, I'm not sure if that has to do with this or if it has to do with some internal policy on this.
So carve out kind of a, an exception, that is, if anyone is accused of trying to get a family member hired, that it gets reported immediately?
Should be reported immediately to, you know, if it's the city manager or whatever, because that needs to be reported.
I guess that could be, that could have varying shades of gray too.
It does.
Right, it's like wife or guy is related to him by marriage, or, I mean, I, I understand, I, I guess, that, that's fine. We, we could have that as a policy matter, I don't know if you want it in, do you want it in the code?
Not necessarily, I, I just kind of want to understand, I guess, just for all of us to get an understanding of the best way to report something like that.
So.
The code here is kind of all encompassing, so maybe you do want to put it in there.
Well, I, I hate, I mean, so there's a mandatory reporting requirement, does that mean that a member of staff is going to be reporting on one of you to you? I'm just trying to think this through, right, that's not a, not trying to say that, yeah.
It's something to think about.
You're right, okay, for either said, you may want to know, but, yeah, well, we need to think about that.
Yeah, okay. Now, communications of three or more, you brought it up. Now, does that mean three people getting together, three people calling one another individually? What's that breakdown?
Individually, no, if you call a member of council, you're okay. But if you want to set up a conference call with yourself and two others, that's a meeting, and that's a violation.
And also, if you call two others on the same subject, you're creating a chain?
Well, I would say, I, I think two separate phone calls is not a meeting. If you call Michelle, and, excuse me, you call councilwoman Miles, and then you call councilwoman Goodall, I don't, that's not a meeting, you're not having a meeting of the minds of three people. You're two separate conversations, I don't think.
If you circle back though, Rusty told me this, then there probably.
It can be, you're, you're getting close, but I still would say that if, if you're keeping it one-on-one, it's not a meeting violation. If you have an email communication, if you have a phone call, if you have a group text, meeting violation. But if it's communication between two of you, I think any lawyer could support that and defend that in court and say that it's not a meeting violation.
You're safe.
There you go, yeah, statute of limitations, just kidding.
I'm all in. You know, talking about, about the same issue, that's the big thing my Greg brought up, that was one of the questions. Might be some further check on that in case, just in case.
Right, but, sure.
What's the state under the sunshine law on that?
It's, it's simply.
Meeting, or is that, the sunshine law is a meeting that two or more, I mean, three.
Three, yep, yep, a meeting, and so.
A meeting, so how do you disclose that on, if you're talking to one, and then Michelle calls me, and then I call Anthony, and, and the same thing's going on, and say, hey, well, you know, this and this is going on, how do you feel about that? How do you do this? Isn't that considered?
It's not a meeting, it's not a meeting, and I'm, I'm thinking this through, I would say this. If three of you are able to have simultaneous input on a matter, it's a meeting. If it goes thought conveyed to person, conveyed to person, conveyed to person, not a meeting. Or thought conveyed to person, conveyed to person, not a meeting. But if you in any way involve three of you, it's a meeting, and it has to be posted. But if it's a, if it's a relating of a thought or a relating of a position from a prior conversation, you would get in all kinds of trouble if you could never say, well, I talked to councilwoman Goodall about that, and I think his position is, if every time someone said that was a meeting violation, you know, is your relating that to someone in the council, not a meeting.
Pretty good there.
Thanks, you keep me on my toes.
We discussed this a little bit the last time, and I brought it up about, you know, you being an advisory to council. And that's why I wanted to seek advice to another attorney. And I thought, I had recommended that we ask you for advice and permission on that to go to that secondary council. I'm not sure if that's something that we should, or should have.
Well, we may want to discuss that more, and I, I think my answer then was, I don't want to have a, you know, a chilling effect, that's a, a bad expression right there, but I, I don't want to, you know, discourage you from seeking another legal opinion. However, you know, lawyers always hear, well, I talked to another lawyer, and he says you're full of it. Or she said, so, that's one thing, but also, I mean, there are certain matters where, you know, if, if everyone was saying, well, I confer with outside counsel, that's just not correct, because I, so that wouldn't be okay to do. And if it's a matter of that, I, I don't know, I, I'm just trying to think of an example, a kind of a bright line, where it would be okay for you to, to seek outside counsel. I, I think if I'm, if I'm advising all of you, especially in executive session, you, you could not seek outside counsel, because you really would be violating executive session concepts by conferring. And of course, you could always say to me, we want to know what SIRS thinks, or we want to know what somebody else thinks.
But individually, there is no way you can prevent us to talk to an attorney.
Correct, correct, I can.
How could we, as a council person, unless you're paying for those services on your own?
Correct.
How, how can you do, you can't. I mean, if you're going, if you're going to set up a, a meeting with an attorney, he's not going to do it for free, so therefore, you're going to have to pay for it yourself.
Correct, right, but there have been a lot of lawyers historically who would get involved in council matters just for the sake of getting involved in council matters. And there would be lawyers who would advise members of council and say, you know, you shouldn't do that, don't like your lawyer. Anyway, I'm sorry, that's a tough question.
I guess the, the thing, what it boils down to is, are you seeking advice, and like I said, from just a regular attorney, or are you seeking some, some experience?
Sure, good point, you're right. Everyone, anonymous, go ahead.
Say, if I wanted your opinion about something that was discussed in council, is that a deal for me to go to and ask you about? Your opinion would, I mean, that way?
No.
No? I mean, say if something came up with the council, I said, well, you know, don't see that going too good, and I call last and then I say, well, that's what you think about?
That's what his.
That's what he's there for.
That's his role, yeah, he's, he's our council.
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay, sorry.
I would think that the system is such that you are council's representative attorney.
Correct.
And, and counselor. And that if anyone finds it necessary to, of our own expense and initiative, find a different person, things are probably deteriorating much beyond.
Good point, that's right.
Much beyond any function.
Good point.
I mean, if we're at that point, the whole thing's going to hell anyway.
No, that's right, and, and I think that's absolutely correct. And either there's a lot of acrimony amongst you, or there's not a lot of trust in.
And to furnish frank to that, just because I feel obligated to say so, not only you have you, but you have the representation from SIRS and other people, why would you find it necessary for one of us to find your own attorney? It just doesn't make sense.
Well, he has a mic regarding you.
Well, good point.
Yeah, I, I would.
That's true, that's right.
And that's right.
That's something I, no, I didn't go beyond that, I would be on my thoughts, I think individual.
That's correct, you know, you, you talked about SIRS from outside other than those matters, that's the reason why, you know, SIRS, and even seeing how, how attorneys, you know, specializing in this stuff, while with you.
Correct.
We need to keep that in mind for council.
Right. Okay.
The board of directors.
The statutory limitation of fifty dollars per year.
I had to find out where they're on.
So, Mayor, Council members, the statutory aggregate on amortience is fifty dollars per year. So, that's true, per year, per person per year.
In aggregate.
In aggregate, yeah.
So I can't get French fries?
Sorry.
Start pushing the slurp. Well, no, seriously, how do you get a dinner? You have to pay your own bill.
Well, I guess so. Sorry, big spender.
I'm thinking of like action twenty-two, we have breakfast with Larry Crowder.
Right, and I think that's kind of benefiting a group, I.
I think if other people are privy to the, consider.
Right, it's not a gift to you directly, you're partaking. We're not going to add up your breakfasts over, I do probably mean the group breakfast, I don't mean to sound glib, I, you just, if, if it's a group, it's not benefiting you directly. Okay? You missed our scintillating conversation, councilman. You missed our scintillating conversation, Councilman.
I'm sorry, I thought it was five thirty.
No, no, okay.
All right, thanks. All right, let's go ahead and we'll close out the work session, and we have, Greg, you wanna fill in what's happening with this next group?
Sure. Maybe we should have...
Come on in. These guys, come on in.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Okay, um, this is a very special evening for firefighters. They are rejoining the International Association of Firefighters and reclaiming Local Number Six. So, something to go there, a long way, it's probably the first year of existence, I would think. So is there anything you want to...
Yeah, I'd like to, if I could, just tell a little bit of a story about what has happened here today. So...
Can you give us your name, please?
Sure, I'm Captain Baker with the Trinidad Fire Department. I've been employed with this for eighteen years, finishing up my eighteenth year, going on nineteen years. So, I just wanna kinda give you a little history on how this all came about. Years ago, we started doing inspections around town and getting everybody up to fire code. And I had done an inspection with Judge Newman's law practice, and his wife actually was somewhat of like a curator for the museum, and we had to go check the fire extinguishers at the museum. Okay, well, I was new here, so I didn't really know what was in that museum. But as I went through, I came across some pictures, okay? And I started looking into the history, and that kinda led me from one step to the next. And what I did is went to the library, and some of you remember the microfilm? I mean, you kinda go through some of that stuff. So, I had a little bit of help working that and found a rich history about Trinidad Fire Department. So, what I found was that one of the things that caught my eye was that at one time we had horse-drawn fire apparatus that was steam pumped, basically. And there was two horses that pulled that, and there was a request chip to get another horse because the horses were tired. So, what I did was, I decided, well, I should probably get that picture and hang it in our station, so I did. So, one of those pictures, if I could have one of the firefighters come up that has the first two horses, that's the three with two horses. I just wanted to show you guys a couple of these pictures, okay? So, if you would, if you could just hand it up and pass that down? And then if I could get the three horses? You gotta prove. So, if you take a look at it, that's also about the time in eighteen ninety-one, we had the Rapp Brothers build the museum. And that's when they also became city council, the fire station, and also the police station. So if you've ever been in the museum, down in the basement, they have the old heavy iron steel cages down there. But there's still in existence the fighter pole in the museum too, so that just tells a lot of the history. So outside of the museum, they took another picture with the two horses, I believe, yeah, right there. Bring that out. And so here's outside of the children's museum slash fire department, city council, and jail. And so, from that point in nineteen fifteen, Trinidad Fire Department, along with Pueblo, Colorado, and Colorado Springs, made the journey to Washington DC to sign in with the AFL, okay? And at that point, of course, they made their way back. In nineteen eighteen, they actually affiliated with the IAFF, okay? The International Association of Firefighters was now born in nineteen eighteen. And Trinidad, Colorado were some of the founding fathers of that, okay? So what they did is they presented us with Local Six, okay, because we signed in nineteen fifteen. So as of current, Pueblo, Colorado is Local Three. And with us today is Mr. Joey Gutierrez, who is also the president of Local Three, Pueblo, Colorado. We couldn't have Local Five, which is Colorado Springs, here with us today, they have got the irons in the fire right now. And today, as Local Six, we are here today to get presented with our historic number, Local Six, back in Trinidad, Colorado. This was about fourteen years in the, in the works, and in the last ten years, I've really put forth a lot of effort. Last two years, as you know, we've separated our bargaining units to three separate bargaining units, which allowed us then at that point to disassociate and decertify with the ABSMI. And that vote that we all took in here that night, was because of you guys, that it allowed us now to reclaim our historic number of six. So, on behalf of myself, chief firefighters, all firefighters in here, we say thank you very much for allowing us to reclaim that historic number for Trinidad, Colorado, and continue the rich history, and hopefully for generations to come, we maintain Local Six.
We are. Congratulations for your determination.
Yes, sir. At this time, if I could, we also have President for the Colorado Professional Firefighters, Mike Fournier, and Secretary Treasurer, here to present Trinidad Fire Department with our charter back as Local Six. Do you wanna say a couple words?
Yeah, I, first of all, thank you, and thank you for giving the firefighters here in Trinidad the opportunity to come back into the international. They've been absent for close to, we figured out, close to sixty years. So, what's great about the international, once you get a local number, they, that local, even if you get out, it maintains, it stays in the archives, and that's why we were able to go back and reclaim this Local Six, which is exciting, not only for, of course, Trinidad, but for the state of Colorado and for the international. The international president is very excited about this day. This closes out the top ten of locals one through ten that are reaffiliated back. Trinidad was the last to come back. They're now working on the first twenty-eight. Kenny talks a little bit about that, back in nineteen eighteen, there were twenty-eight departments on hand when they, they went out on their own as the International Association of Firefighters. The two, Local One and Two, actually flipped a coin to figure out who was gonna be Local One, and who was gonna be Local Two, and that's Pittsburgh and Chicago. So they flipped a coin, the rest of them picked out of a hat. Trinidad was there, which is incredible, the rich history that Colorado has with the international. So, a sixty years' absence, but we're excited, this goes, dates back, and Kenny really worked hard on this too. Every, every piece of this, Kenny Baker had a big part of it, which we appreciate, but it's dated December twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, and that represents...
National Forefathers Day, and also National Fruitcake Day. But I just wanted to make sure we didn't confuse the two. So, it is, I must have been somewhat of a fruitcake at the point to put all this work, but after it's all done and said, it's National Forefathers Day, and so this is a new beginning for Trinidad Fire Department to move forward again, and continue the rich history of our fire department.
We always talk about, I'll end on this, the international represents three hundred and thirty thousand professional firefighters in the United States and Canada. There's over thirty-six hundred locals, which Trinidad Local Six is a part of. And now our locals, when we have new locals join, they're in the five thousands, which tells you that locals come and go, not come and go, but there's a lot of local numbers out there. My local up in Denver area, we have three different charters, because we've merged with different departments. You get a new local when you do that. So, it goes back, and every time, we went back and got our original number, which was thirteen oh nine, where Pikers compared to Trinidad, rejoined in the fifties, I believe. So, we're really excited about this day. Talked to Kenny a lot about it, not a very big department, but it doesn't matter. We, we represent anywhere in Colorado, we represent little as three members in Golden Fire Department, all the way up to Denver Fire, which represents over eleven hundred members. So, in Colorado, we represent five thousand, just now over five thousand firefighters, professional firefighters in the state, and we're, we're very pleased to be here to present this to not only the Trinidad firefighters, but the city of Trinidad.
You guys, you got this.
Yeah.
Can you get it on camera?
Sure.
Jason Lucas. Jason, Secretary Treasurer, come on up here, too. Chief, where's my chief?
I'll let you.
Okay, chief, come on up.
Did you want me to work it like Crouching Tiger? I wasn't sure who to look at exactly.
Before you leave, would everyone, all of you turn around and give us your names, so we know who everyone is?
Absolutely, my name is Mike Fournier, I'm the president of Colorado Professional Firefighters. And I also work at West Metro Fire, I've been there thirty-two years.
So if I could, I'd like to pass this around to you guys, so you can also be a part of...
Name's Jason Lucas, I'm with the General Treasurer for the Department, I'm also the Secretary Treasurer for Local Six.
Ken, how are the fires?
I'm Phil Cordova, I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the Denver Firefighters, we're late by date. I've been there for thirteen years, I'm also the Secretary Treasurer of the Colorado Professional Firefighters.
Joey Gutierrez, I'm with the City of Pueblo Fire Department, Local Three, I've been with the City of Pueblo for twenty-one years.
So a lot of smoke among you, yeah?
You know, just to tell you a little story too, I actually met Joey when I was putting in garage doors before I became a firefighter, and he was a plumber, he was just a year off of probation. And I told him that I was testing to become a firefighter, and going through the school, and everything it takes to become a firefighter, and he told me at that point, don't quit. So here we are.
My brother Joe.
Oh, we, you know, we know, especially, you know, the entire community, and personally, the city council. We recognize the work that you people do, day in and day out, and you put your lives on the line for us as community members. So we greatly appreciate what you do, and we always hope that you don't have to fight another fire, but we know that that's not the real world. Thank you for everything that you do, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
And beyond that, not very long ago, I had an opportunity for you to come into my house. My wife was laying with a stroke, so it's much above and beyond, you were the first responders there. That night, started treatment on my wife, and I appreciate y'all very much.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, city council staff, thank you very much.
If anybody's interested, we're having a reception at the Holiday Inn. You wanna come and grab a beer and just talk with the guys, feel free, we're gonna be there for just a few hours, so...
Open, right?
There's advertisers there, yes, it's open, as soon as you put that credit card on the table, we're good, so... Anyway, we'll let you get back to your meeting, we thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
The authority is saying to skip the meeting, let's grab a beer.
Let's go out with a beer.
You're the mayor.
...